I'd like to call to order the Springbrough Board of Education organizational meeting for January 9, 2018. With accordance with board policy, I vote in the meeting to serve as president pro tempore.
Yes, we are going to swear in the board members. That way we're not going to be real, we're not going to be named. All right. I'm going to be speaking, I don't want to be speaking, but you guys can be speaking. All right, so I'm going to swear and then say your name, okay? Do you? All right, follow and swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States of the State of Ohio, and that you will faithfully and faithfully discharge your duties as members of the Board of Education of the Springbrough Community City School District, Warren County, Ohio, to the best of your ability, and will perform to the laws now in effect and thereafter to be enacted during your continuing since our office and until your successor is electrically qualified. That's it, that's it. Thank you for speaking. All right.
Students, from what I was telling you in the hall, those three board members were elected in November, and so today they aim to put their hands in the air and swear to do a great job as board members this year. So you saw, we talked about the hall.
Roll call.
Anderson?
Here.
Bab?
Here.
Palonge?
Here.
Good?
Here.
Stinky?
Here.
For my rise for the pledge, I'm glad you came.
The Constitution of the United States of America, and the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Moving on to Board One, election of Board President. Over to the floor, are there any nominations for Board President?
Annalise, Dave, Stinky, the President.
Is there a second?
I'll second him later.
Discussion?
I would like to...
Okay.
Okay. I was looking back, I've been attending board meetings for ten years, and I was looking back over the past ten years, and my memory was just that there was changes in board presidents throughout the past ten years. And so I just wanted to state that I think that there's a reason for that, to have difference in leadership, change in leadership, just it's good to have fresh eyes as we, as we look, as we approach things. So that is what my vote's going to reflect tonight. As we, I look back to the records that I could find, just back to 2006, and Mr. Anderson did it two years in a row, and Mr. Stinky did that in two years in a row. Before that, he's been a different president every year. So that's what my vote is going to reflect tonight. Thank you.
I take over the floor. I'll be alone when he resigns, because I was vice president, it wasn't like I was elected at that time. Roll call.
Anderson?
Yeah.
Bab?
Yeah.
Palonge?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Stinky?
Yes.
Is there a nomination for the election of the Vice President?
Annalise, Jamie Palonge, the Vice President.
Is there a second?
No second.
Discussion? Roll call.
Anderson?
Yes.
Bab?
Yes.
Palonge?
Same.
Good?
Yes.
Stinky?
Yes.
Adoption of the agenda two, three? Is there a motion to adopt tonight's agenda?
So move.
Second?
Second.
Roll call.
Anderson?
Yes.
Bab?
Yes.
Palonge?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Stinky?
Yes.
Two, four, approval of the December fourteenth meeting minutes. Is there a motion to accept the fourteenth December minutes? Then it...
Second.
Roll call.
Anderson?
Yes.
Bab?
Yes.
Palonge?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Stinky?
Yes.
Two, five, approval of the December eighteenth spatial meeting minutes. Is there a motion to accept that?
So move.
Second?
Second.
Roll call.
Anderson?
Yes.
Bab?
Yes.
Palonge?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Stinky?
Yes.
Two, six, establishing meeting minutes, times, and places. Meeting dates.
So move. I'll second.
Second.
With this, can we set our, yeah, can we set our planning sessions tonight or soon for our, when we talk about having Saturday sessions, since we're only going, because we're going down to once a month? Just so we can come out?
Yeah, what I can do is set some dates in some different months and see when all five, ten, I know we had a couple last year, and there was one we really struggled to try to find, say, because of family Saturdays. So to do that, it's nice and tough, but I can get that sent very soon.
Great, okay. Or even a evening, like a long evening, for, you know, four hour evening or something, just so that we can get it on calendars.
Long as that was served.
That's right. Yeah, that'd be great.
Yeah. I guess we've done it last.
Saturday mornings or weekday mornings.
No.
We are now, the family of, Anderson?
Yes.
Bab?
Yes.
Palonge?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Stinky?
Yes.
Three point one, appointment of board members to the district committees facilitated by the Superintendent Treasurer. Everybody, Stinky and the, the ones who want to read them or...
They are actually put into more docs here. I believe there were two meeting committees that had three people interested, otherwise our minds would be getting these numbers off.
I think Jamie, you've ever replaced my damn...
Go to me.
Yeah. All right, is there a motion to accept the...
Actually, we have to show the, to show the information already. I think we just have to, to show who that we're supporting, always have to be, you know, the two of us are always supporting.
So are these open, that if we wanted to attend, like, can anybody be community committees? If we wanted to attend one that we're not on, we can attend?
Well, good, so.
You can say...
But I mean, we would sit on the, yeah, yeah, it's a good question. We could sit on the outside as long as we're not participating. Okay, great, thank you.
Three, two, appointment of board member members to public records accessory.
That was you.
Do we have any volunteers?
Can you tell me what that is? I mean, I know what it is, but like, timing wise?
It's not, it's probably, well, you can do it online, you can attend online class.
Rest of the night.
Get to do the tests?
Oh, yeah.
You do?
And if you miss it, you can go back and retake the test, let's see how...
I'll do it, I'll do it. You've already done it, I'll do it.
You want to do it?
I'll do it, I'll do it.
Very much.
Take one for the team.
You can't retake a test until you're an adult.
I like...
I'll change it to a form that at least about the contact history, so then I can make a motion.
Is there a motion?
Yeah, move, is it? So move. I'll second.
Anderson?
Yes.
Bab?
Yes.
Palonge?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Stinky?
Yes.
Annual standing resolutions, four, one. Authorize the Treasurer to request the advance of property tax revenue from Warren County, Montgomery County auditors for all amounts payable. Is there a...
Yeah, we go all the way through, four point six, four point seven.
All right, four, two, approval of membership renewal with the Springbrough Chamber of Commerce. Four, three, approval of membership to OSBA. Four, four, approval to establish a board service fund for 2018 according to the ORC Section 3315.2015 in the amount of $20,000, and to authorize reimbursement for full expenses to Board of Education members for authorized activities upon presentation of proper receipts. Four, five, approval to authorize Superintendent and Treasurer to attend seminars and meetings that are beneficial to them as representatives of the school district during 2018 within the limits of order appropriated funds. Any discussion? I don't have the files in here, but remember, the last board meeting we were going to do, they were...
That should be done, that's down to... This is the stuff where we have absolutely every single year of the organizational meeting, so it's just a surrender that has members to play.
Is there a motion to accept four, one, two, or five?
I'm motion. Go ahead.
Roll call.
Anderson?
Yes.
Bab?
Yes.
Palonge?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Stinky?
Yes.
Five point one, approval to establish January eighth, 2019, as the organizational meeting for that year, 2019. Is there a motion?
So move.
Second?
Part of the session, we contacted the Department of Labor Center, trying to make sure that we're not in conflict, even though it's twelve months ahead, we don't want to have conflict there.
Roll call.
Anderson?
Yeah.
Bab?
Yes.
Palonge?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Stinky?
Yes.
Now, the treasurer.
They've waited very...
I told you guys it'd be thirty minutes, it was only twelve, how about that? That's like getting out of school, isn't it? Just kidding. Would that be nice, you know? Members of the board, this month is a special month, School Board Recognition Month. At your seats, there is a blue folder that has your certificate that comes to you every year from the Ohio School Boards Association with your name in it. Those of you that have been a board member for several years, we know that these are filling up a wall in your house. However, we want to make something special tonight. And with that, Mrs. Hunter and Mrs. Stacy worked with all of the building leadership to develop a nice program tonight. So Mrs. Hunter and Mrs. Stacy, I turn the call over to you.
Good evening. We are truly honored to be here today to be able to recognize our Board of Education. We have a conglomerate of Springbrough students that we're pretty proud of, that are representing, I believe, the general building. So as Mrs. Stacy kind of gets them organized, they are going to use the house, and we'll share what building they attend and what grade they'll hold here currently.
And we're going to speak loudly, students.
And how many of you, we're very excited to present to you our students of Springbrough Schools, a conglomerate. And directing them this evening is going to be Melissa McIntosh, who is the choir director and teacher at SI. Okay, I think that's plenty. So I'm going to turn it over to her, and let her go ahead and organize our...
So we're going to, we're going to follow the leader this way, and this is near the end of the front row. Follow me, and you guys are just going to follow. The song that you will enjoy this evening was actually written by a former Springbrough teacher who is retired, her name is Stacy, and that's the moment. So we, we are just pretty proud that this is a kind of homegrown song that we will, to appreciate each and everyone again. All right, we wanted to...
You guys can go around behind the board if you want to see their faces.
My name is Michael Brandon, and I go to Dennisell Elementary, and I am in fifth grade.
Good evening, my name is Alvin Delgashen, I go to Dennisell Elementary, and I am in fifth grade.
Good evening, my name is Lena Montal, and I am in fifth grade. Good evening, my name is...
Good evening, my name is Katie Brett, and I go to Dennisell Elementary.
Good evening, my name is George Carla, and I attend Springbrough Elementary, and I am in sixth grade.
Good evening, my name is Zadie Strianke, I am in sixth grade, and I attend Springbrough Elementary.
Good evening, my name is Charles Newland, I attend Dennisell Elementary, and I am in fifth grade.
Good evening, my name is Brooke Marksley, I attend Springbrough Junior High School, and I am in eighth grade.
Good evening, my name is Connor Trustee, and I go to the Springbrough Junior High.
Good evening, I'm Ally Codap, I go to Springbrough Junior High School, and I am in eighth grade.
Good evening, my name is Cheyenne Thompson, I attend Springbrough High School, and I am in ninth grade.
Good evening, my name is Abby Heide, I go to the Springbrough High School, and I am in ninth grade.
Good evening, my name is Camille Klein, I'm from the Springbrough High School, and I'm a freshman.
Good evening, my name is Lenny Gabbert, I attend Dennisell Elementary, and I am in fifth grade.
Good evening, my name is Josie Johnson, I'm a fifth grader at Dennisell Elementary.
Good morning, my name is Samuel Darmey, and I attend Dennisell Elementary, and I am in fifth grade.
Good evening, my name is Laet Markham, I'm a fifth grader attending Dennisell Elementary.
Just to plug, Mrs. Baracko was my very first music teacher in Springbrough. She's part of the reason I'm a music teacher. And you were my orchestra teacher.
How long?
A long time. So you, I know, think they were saying...
That was my older brother.
All right. How can I speak?
We just want to thank you. We just want to thank you. Doesn't take much time to say, for the things you do each day, two little words. We just want to thank you. We just want to thank you. It won't cost us anything, but it's worth remembering, two little words. Sometimes you can write it in a letter, sometimes you can sing it in a song. Sometimes you can say it even better, if you send a gift along. We just want to thank you. We just want to thank you. Doesn't take much time to say, for the things you do each day, two little words. We just want to thank you. We just want to thank you. It won't cost us anything, but it's worth remembering, two little words. Thank you.
Oh, don't leave yet, you guys stand right there. You guys, because we're going to recess here a little bit. But these guys, I think this is the first time all together to do this, isn't it?
Yeah.
Trying to get all these buildings together, they had to practice in individual buildings. You guys did a great job. I mean, before you leave, anything from the board?
I do, of course. So how many of you saying this when you were in ele, like, for those of you that are not in elementary, how many of you saying this in elementary? Okay, which is so cool, Mrs. Baracko is one of my neighbors, and I always make sure when I see her at the pool in the summer that I thank her, because I love coming back to Volunteer Appreciation Day, because they still, if you said Dennis, they still sing that every year, and I love that, because it's so important that you guys understand the importance of saying thank you to those teachers and staff people and custodians and all the people that are there, and to Mrs. Baracko, because her, the legacy is, is going on, the fact that she took the time to write that. I just think it's such a neat tradition that we're carrying on. And thank you guys for taking the time out of your schedule to come tonight. I appreciate you guys.
Anything else?
Thank you very much. Very bright.
Probably have too many for a big picture, but we took a lot of pictures from behind, so.
Take a recess. Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
The Springbrough Education Association. The classified employees, you did not have any rearranged. Is there any public participation on any agenda items? You'll read for the work sheet.
President, we have a new policy discussion, and, uh, we'll start that.
He has a call. I told my vote for him. Okay, sorry, I didn't realize I was on so quick. Hang on, just a sec. Okay, I'm having issues with my mic, I can't get it to work, so I'm going to hold it. Yes, that's why I'm holding it. Okay, I brought some information just so that you have the same data that I'm looking at. Um, last week, or last month, when I had asked about it, I could pass, or I don't remember if I had passed it out or if I had sent it, but I'm going to go ahead and give it to you again. Yeah, yeah, if you wouldn't mind, since I'm only one handed. This is, one of them is on discrimination, one of them is on equity. Um, and this is when we had looked into Neola, what Norm had said was, he was looking at our policy on discrimination and thinking that since we have a policy on discrimination, that that would make sense, that that would also cover the discussion on equity. And if I can also have a copy for myself? Thanks. Um, and I, you know, before I really dug into this with what I do professionally, it made sense that discrimination, equity seemed to make, seemed to be the same thing, but I just wanted to have a discussion as a board to really look at the difference of what discrimination is and what equity is. Um, so if you can take just a second and look at the difference in what the policy is. This is what I've given them, just so that you guys know out there, is Baltimore City, um, City School Board has policies, and they have one, and it's, if you guys want to look it up, it's in Baltimore City Schools, um, they have a policy on discrimination and on equity. The reason I feel like this is important is, if you look at data, and with the project that I'm involved with, everything is in Montgomery County, um, but the, the data in Montgomery County is consistent with the data nationally, so I'm pretty confident that it would also be the same as what our data is in Warren County and in Springbrough. And what that shows, and this is where I have little packets for everybody, so what you're going to be looking at is Montgomery County, but like I said, I think you're going to see the same consistent thing across the board. Babe, can I have you pass that down? Just leave one for Charles, if you don't mind. What you see, and the reason that we, that, um, they pulled out the African American population was just, they are the largest subpopulation, but what it shows is, across the board, whether we're looking at the academic level, whether we're looking at the level of the kids that are suspended, across the board, you're going to see that African American males are always the ones that academically are scoring lower. They're the ones that are suspended more frequently. Um, there's just some things that, it's made me look through things with a different lens, and it, and when I look at equity, I'm not saying that we're doing something wrong in our district. I'm saying that maybe we need to have a kind of heightened awareness to make sure that when we're selecting curriculum, that we're looking through it with the, through the eyes of our entire population. And we don't have a large population, that a very diversified, um, population in Springbrough. But whether we're looking at our, our students with special needs, our students that are African American or Asian or whatever, when we are looking at, um, the students that get suspended, or, um, are the number, the percentage of students that are absent, then looking at the demographics of them. Do we have a higher rate percentage wise of a certain population? Sometimes there's an implicit bias that is happening that we don't even, we're not even aware of, and this, that's what this policy addresses. So there's things in the policy, um, hang on, I need my readers, sorry, they're getting old. Um, there's things in the policy where the guidelines state that they will, we will include cultural responsiveness in reviews of curriculum and assessment design. Identify annually whether the discipline process has any disproportionate impact on minority, English language learner status students, or a negative impact on special education students. Recruit and increase participation of persons from underrepresented groups in school programs. Report annually on the employment retention, recruiting, and placement of persons from underrepresented groups. Include, include in any and all facility plans for new construction and in the renovation of existing facilities, considerations of equity and access to 21st century learning environments. This is just a very proactive thought process of making sure that as we're looking ahead of things, that we're really looking at all of these different populations. And the data, once again, it is from Montgomery County, but nationally, it's, it duplicates what Montgomery County is. It's very, very consistent. Um, I saw a video report, and it was of a teacher that knew they were being watched for children that were misbehaving, and they knew that they were being watched, and where their eyes were going to go, and their eyes automatically went to the African American boy. And it was, it was not an intentional thing, and it was not the African American boy that was causing the problems. It was an implicit bias, that when they saw there was trouble, they automatically thought that that's who it was. And I just think that there can be an awareness, a training of our staff, just making sure that sometimes there's things that we assume that possibly it's there, and it's not there.
Mrs. Bab, would, are you looking at possibly a policy that is similar to what you sent us from the board? Or an actual training? Because there are, I've actually had cultural, cultural competence training at a couple of different schools. There's a great organization on the middle town that does that, that deals with a lot of the things that you're talking about. It's a little pricey sometimes, but it handles all of this. Would, are you thinking both, or are you thinking one or the other?
Well, if you have one training, that's a one and done, whereas this, it's not even just a...
This is, this training would be a problem, it's several times.
But that doesn't address the, I appreciate that, because that, I think, is something to definitely look into for the training portion of it, but then there's the curriculum piece of it, there's the piece to look at to say, for the students that are being, that are, um, getting suspended, is there something that we should look at from our data? This, I think, is just, would cause us to, to make sure that there aren't things that we're doing that potentially we're not looking, um...
So a policy for us to make in the forefront?
Yes.
To be able to see what we're doing.
That, yeah, that's exactly it. It just kind of keeps us aware, and that's exactly it, in the forefront. So it's, it's a little bit more than just saying, we're not discriminating, but it's, we're proactively saying, we're going to make sure that we're being equitable. And this came up because of, I'm part of a kindergarten readiness summit in Montgomery County, and it came up because we saw all this data, and it was the consistently seeing the African American male and female low on everything, we're saying, what is it? I mean, sometimes it's the situations that some of them are in, but it's not, it's not always what the issue is.
You know, only being there eighteen months, the great thing is that I have never received a phone call or had a conversation with an administrator with this headband issue so far. Not saying that hasn't, or that it may be in the future. What I'm hearing, and I would, you know, the entire board here chiming in, I'm hearing that Lee's administration may be looking at drafting a policy that would go to our policy committee.
Absolutely, yeah.
And then to this cultural competency training, my thought is, maybe not the full blown staff training, but we have administrator meetings, we could have a great training to add to the policies, and now how to implement that from the administrator level, and we don't look at for now, and see how we go down the line.
Because I, I like that, because I don't think this is something that, there's different components to it, because it's something that, like, as Mrs. Cook looks at curriculum, well, that's not something necessarily that she's looking at next week, it's something that might come in four, or six, or twelve months, you know? So there's different components to it, that it would be evolving, so that's one piece of it, is for the staff. It's a staff training piece, but there's different... It's a staff training piece, but there's different pieces, whatever the policy committee chose to put into it. And I think that there is, like, what Norm from Neola stated, you know, there are pieces that might intersect with the discrimination, but I think, and that's why I pulled, I went to Baltimore's board docs, and just to look at, this is what their discrimination policy is, so just because you have a discrimination, it, it points out there is something different between discrimination and equity. So it's just making sure that this is something that we're keeping in the forefront, and that we're really looking at to make sure that, because truly, I, it, it's not that we're having this slew of problems with it, it's more so staying ahead of it and keeping it on the forefront of our thought as we're going through these different decisions. Does that make sense?
It does, and I appreciate the conversation, because I didn't get the full understanding till right now. I like the idea of looking at developing a policy. As we develop that, I love sending drafts.
Yeah, that'd be awesome.
It's kind of an over this, the idea. But what I'm thinking is, bring in the outside group, or experts in cultural competence to work with our administrators. Then, as you know, as an educator, we learn the best way, let's empower the administrators to work with staff. Instead of paying huge money for some outside group, our, our group knows our stuff better. So bring in some experts to work with them. So I appreciate this, I now understand.
Yeah, and I, you know, it's interesting, cause I'm in a group, I have my meeting tomorrow night, and I'm very encouraged to bring this back to them, because it's a group of the people that are helping plan our kindergarten readiness summit for this coming year, and there was a lot of frustrations in the, in the room, because they said, what we need is, we need superintendents and boards of education to understand the difference between equity and, and discrimination, and to, just to recognize that, that we have to make sure that we're being equitable in a lot of these different areas. And so I appreciate that we're open to just having a discussion of what this might look like in our district, even though we are not a very diversified district, there are things other than even the African-American population. There's, this also is with the special education population and the Asian population. There's a lot of components to equity outside of just, that, you know, the data that I gave you from Montgomery County is African-American just because that's the largest subpopulation, but there's a lot of components to equity that it's exciting to think about, what we could do with this.
One, I think also one of the most important things to bring out, Mrs. Bass, is that what this does is make Springbrough schools a district of wellness every month. And I think that fits in the foremost of your minds, thank you.
Yes, thank you, I appreciate the open thought.
I do have some thoughts on this, so I, I tried to read up on it, and I guess, one, I'm not in love with at least Baltimore County's policy as stated. I know Cincinnati Public has an equity policy, it's materially different from this. As I think Portland City Schools, I was just trying to find various ones.
Both the other one, I'm sorry.
Uh, Portland, yeah. And I guess one, one concern I had is, is I read through these policies, the disparity is vast in terms of both, I think, how they define some of these definitions, and then how they try to address, you know, the equity issue. So I think, you know, as we go through this, I, I think it's very important for us to step back and do maybe more of a holistic survey, if you will, of what these policies are out there for various districts. I mean, it seems like Cincinnati just wrote down the road, that makes sense to...
Well, one of the things I thought, Mr. Good, was, Okona has a real breadth of different cultures, and I already met Mr. Miller, outstanding superintendent, we're actually trying to put together next one. So I think that would be a great meeting to see what kind of equity policy they have, compare it with some of these others, I mean, we just can't compare ourselves with Portland, all of our bulk of talent to Westchester.
Yeah, I'm not married to Baltimore at all, this is just the one that happened to be, this was brought to us, so there's nothing in here that I'm stuck with, I just, I like the idea of being proactive and looking at equity and having a policy on that, and not just looking at discrimination.
Yeah, I completely agree, I guess, and to kind of finish the thought on this, and what concerned me about Baltimore on this is I read through it and trying to see what happened, cause I think this went into effect with, yeah, 2014. Two years later, based on the equity policy, they got rid of the gifted program. So they ended up getting rid of it based on this, and that concerns me a little bit, yeah. So they basically went...
Can you tell me more about that? I didn't hear anything about this.
Yeah, so they, so they took apart their gifted program, and basically said, based on their interpretation of this equity policy, every, every teacher was required to teach up to gifted in the, in their own classroom versus pulling kids out into gifted clusters or gifted classrooms. And obviously, there were some concerns in terms of how that ultimately...
So they were telling each teacher to differentiate within their own classroom?
Special education all the way up to gifted.
They sounded like they carried, you can see where somebody could carry it to the extreme.
Well, and that's kind of my point, is that it's...
We look well- treated everybody.
Yeah, and I, I'm not dismissing this in any way, I'm just saying, it seemed like in this case, if this is a case study, if you will, there were some pretty significant ramifications a couple of years after this got implemented. Now, I will say, you know, as I, as I read through the information I had at Baltimore, they've got some serious issues there. So again, Dan made a great point, compare ourselves to what amounts to inner-city Baltimore, it's probably not a great comparison, but at the same time, I, I think it is interesting to see for the districts that have had this in place for a couple of years, what happened? You know, what, what were the outcomes of that policy, and, you know, what, what would potentially happen here? Again, I, we have a policy committee, I think this is great.
Yeah, and I say definitely turn this over to the policy committee, cause it's not, that's why we have a policy committee.
This is the road districts are going down, and I sincerely agree, but I just, my point is, I would love to get a more holistic view, here's all the policies out there.
I totally agree, I'm totally on board with that.
I appreciate you bringing this, it was an interesting read.
Probably jump to other districts. Well, we can, I think, I think we, we know who our line of districts are, and we can do that, we can start that process and then get to the policy committee, but at least as I, as I talk to policy committee developer, I'm gonna keep you copying that, I appreciate you bringing this up.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Evening, Mr. President, members of the board. This evening, I bring to you a novel that was requested for approval, it came in a little bit late. Our teachers went to a seminar this summer, and we spent the first teachers at the high school, and this book was recommended at that seminar. Obviously, that came after the fact of our spring adoption, so they asked if they could possibly get this approved post-开学 semester this year. So what I did is I went through what we do, kind of a mini-process, found five community readers, put them on the novel. And as, as the weeks have gone by, and I talked to parents who read, this book just keeps coming up. So this is, this is a very popular read amongst folks who, who are avid readers. It is The Nightingale by Kristin Hannah, and as I listened to Mrs. Bass talking about equity among underrepresented groups, this, this book is right to the core, in that it is a World War II novel, written by, written by two sisters in France, they're German sisters in, in the French community, and they are basically behind the scenes fighting for war, an underrepresented group. Most of our novels, we have for World War II timeframe, have male heroes, we don't have heroines. So this is an underrepresented group within the World War II novel set. So this has come to my attention, I'm bringing it to your attention for full approval during our...
Thank you, Mrs. Cook, and Ms. Cook, and if you could, that's seven point four, program studies.
All right. You'll find on your tables three handouts that I've prepared for you. This, this is the presentation that we're about to give to you. This is a draft that I will be addressing shortly, the one page, and the program studies, which Mr. Martin and I are happy to bring to you this evening. We've spent several weeks working with our high school staff. I don't think they can see it okay. Folks can see it all right?
Yeah.
We've been working on this draft for several weeks, working toward bringing courses that are of interest to our students, as we do each year. So in doing so, we surveyed students, talked to them about what their interests are, tried to bring programs that will allow them to be career and college-ready. In so doing, we've kind of shortened the presentation a little bit tonight from what we've had in years past.
Thank you.
Got to cover. You'll see that we do have a 22-credit graduation requirement that has not changed, that started with our class of 2017 last year, and moves forward. Our minimum courses by grade, we look for our freshmen and sophomores to carry a course load of six courses, and our juniors and seniors to carry a course load of five per day. Our students do drive our schedule, meaning that we put the course of study, the program of studies out for our students, they have the opportunity to talk to their teachers, see what level that their teacher might recommend that they would take, whether that's an AP level, a college prep level, general level courses. We also spend time through our guidance department, working with our students to, to steer a minimum manner that allows them to take coursework that will drive their desires, their aptitude, and what they're interested in for their future. We will look for a minimum of 21 students per course to run that for this coming year, that is with the exception of courses that are continuation. So for instance, if we have a French III course, and we don't have 21 kids, that's a continuation of a program, so we will run that under numbers. We'll do our best to do combined classes. So for instance, if, if we had 13 French III students and seven French IV, we'd likely do a combined course for a total of 20, so we try to, at the best we can, to have ratios that are fiscally responsible within the district.
With those combined classes, like with the French IV and V, and those that I know are really small, will we communicate out with the parents and families in the spring, so that they know what the class will look like in the fall? I just had heard that there was some...
That it will be a combined?
That it will be, just like what that class will look like?
Absolutely, yeah, we can send a letter out to them, and let them know that they're gonna be in a combined, a split.
So that they have a choice to do, like, college credit plus if they're...
They might, yeah, but they might be the choice to either stay or decide to take another course, because they don't wanna be in a combined.
Right, so that is clear to them. I think that there was some confusion with that, when it's not, they don't find out until it's too late to sign up for CCP, so in those situations, can we let them know early? Because then it's too late for them.
If we don't know early enough for CCP, my recommendation would be that if they haven't intent to do CCP, that they go ahead and complete the paperwork by the deadline, and if, if they choose to not do CCP, they're not held to that deadline, they're not held to doing CCP. However, once they, once the deadline hits on CCP, we can not approve CCP coursework after that deadline if we don't have to go forward.
But if there's new families in a French IV, V that doesn't know that this is a possibility, and they find out at the end of August, it puts them in a bind.
New families are treated completely different because they're not here for the deadline?
No, if there's families that have never had, had a child that has gone through French IV, V, so they don't know that this is what the model looks like, can we just make sure that that's communicated so that...
Yeah.
See what I'm saying?
There's no request.
Okay, okay, thank you.
And you're talking about past history, of course, is that, if the past had been combined?
Right, right, thank you, thank you. I know that not everybody is gonna hear their schedule ahead of time, but I think in both situations, we need to make sure we're letting those families know, cause sometimes they would wanna choose CCP, cause it isn't unusual class, and thanks.
All right, we have two new and exciting things that we'd like to talk a little bit about tonight, and that brings me to this handout, this is a draft copy that is being worked on by our digital media art students. I have brought up in the past, when we talked about exciting things that are happening in the district, I brought up that at our last board meeting, that we signed an agreement with the University of Cincinnati, and we have a pathway which will allow students to complete an entire year of college while they're still in high school through the UC-IT partnership. This will allow our students to have direct admission into the IT program at the University of Cincinnati, as well as put them in a position that they can start their internship program the summer following graduation. So when they graduate from high school, before they ever step foot on UC's campus as a student, they will participate in a business internship as part of their program. So that is our first new and exciting, and our second new and exciting is the AP Capstone Program. So I'll turn this over to Mr. Martin for you.
We met with Representative College Board back in, end of October, beginning of November, and what we talked about, really kind of met initially, just to talk about College Board's expectation for their AP courses, students taking AP courses. It's really one of the first time I, we have sat down with somebody kind of one-on-one, and it was, the representative was phenomenal, was a current curriculum coordinator, also an AP English teacher, and now travels with College Board, and actually kind of works in Chicago, then kind of works back here in Cincinnati, which involves both. Within that conversation, we were looking at our AP course offerings, which I'll kind of get into here in a little bit, just about what are some other options for our students that are advanced placement courses. And one of the things that we discussed at that time, then was the AP Capstone Program. And that's kind of what, that's what this is talking about right here, and it should be on your page 15, I think, in the program studies there. But basically, what the AP Capstone Program is, is a program, is a diploma program from the College Board, it kind of really groups two AP courses together, as well as four other courses that students can claim to then graduate with an AP Capstone diploma. The, the two courses are AP Seminar, which we'll be offering next year, and then the follow-up course to that is AP Research, pretty intense class, advanced placement courses. And then if a student takes four other additional AP courses, as well as scores three or higher on all those exams, then they would then congratulate with, when they would qualify as, call it AP Capstone, diploma sort, seal. So we did some research on that, it's actually a program that you have to apply for, and then be accepted into. At this time, there are 28 high schools in the entire state of Ohio, including public and private. So you're talking about 900 and, we're trying to figure it out, 970-some high schools, 990 high schools, only 21 of them have been accepted into the AP Capstone Program. We, Mrs. Cook, myself, and Mrs. Bowden sat down and filled out the application online, we submitted everything we needed to submit, and then we heard back about, a month later, it took about four or five weeks, that we were actually accepted into the program. So there are a few schools around here that hadn't, but very few in southwest Ohio. There's a few up in Cleveland, some up towards Toledo, and then Columbus area has a few, and then a few sprinkling here. So it's not something that is, that is widely used in a lot of the high schools.
They're thrilled to have us.
Yes.
When we met with them, they were really excited that we were interested in the program.
So what were they looking for, like, what do we have? Was it the number of AP courses that we offer, is that what made us appealing to them?
When we looked at, we talked a lot about, we've talked about this in the first four meetings, is the, our AP data as far as increase in our percentage of three or higher, increase in amount of course offerings, and then our huge increase in the amount of students taking an AP course. And with that growth, they said, here, there's, there's no question, we should be applying to this. So, you know, we spent a lot of time and effort in getting everything submitted, and then we heard back, you know, a few weeks there, it took them a little while, we anticipated, but got great news, and there's some things we have to go back and as far as signing, some requirements as far as we have to sign as far as through the AP College Board. So that's what the AP Capstone...
Can I ask?
Go ahead.
We have a few questions on that. What kind of project? I'm sorry. Can you give an example of, like, what a research project might be, a Capstone project might be?
I think if you are a student who's interested in careers in, in medicine, your research project may be different careers in medicine, you may be doing some internship work through a hospital, doing some onsite work with different people in different professions within that particular, particular career cluster. So that, that would, might be something, if I was interested in going to medical field, that might be my area of research.
Okay, thank you, that's awesome.
And then with the research, there's a, there's a 5,000-word thesis thing that has to be put together as part of that, that final project.
So that was actually kind of where I was going, I mean, is this more self-guided, where the student enrolls, and then it's really upon them to determine not only what they're gonna study, but essentially how they're gonna tackle the issue or project, and then, I assume that the instructor acts more as like an advisor?
Facilitator.
Correct, facilitator, advisor, self-guided, a lot of student choice, as far as where, where do you take from here?
So is there a small ratio, again, I mean, that seems like a...
Well, they say...
Depending on how many you get, that's a lot.
I mean, it's a small group of kids that we will, we don't know exactly how many you're going to allow them to get, because we don't know, well, how many is too many? Cause if you're looking at, you know, potentially 25,000 or six or seven thousand-word essays, you know, if you're guiding that type of process, that's a huge undertaking. So we're actually, we have talked to the two teachers that we know are gonna be teaching both those courses, and then we actually have to send them the sum, they have not come out to date yet as far as the four-day... as far as the four-day week long seminar they have to attend in order to teach those courses. They're hoping that they're in Hawaii. Are you okay with that?
Hawaii, Idaho.
So that's, that's kind of what, that's what the seminar then, what the research is, is all about. So really, next year, we'll only show the AP Seminar to be an AP course with research coming around.
That's awesome.
Any other questions about that? If you look here, we've also added AP Physics C, which is a third AP Physics course, which means we have Physics I, II, and C now. We are already starting research with other high schools that have AP Physics C. What does their AP Physics program look like? We start getting into having three options. What does that look like? So we, we did some things differently this year, we'll see how it works, but that is another new course as far as advanced placement course that we have, that we have added. The next six courses there from horror literature, Shakespeare, science, transitional sports, and modern is something new that we're doing this year. We've had a lot of talks with some of the English teachers, Mrs. Cook and myself, and talked and what to do with a trial period with our English. We know that English is a huge course as far as college prep plus is concerned. And also, we talked a lot about bringing in some composition, that is ACT prep, into those courses. What would that look like? Through all those conversations, we basically had come up with where we're, these are six college prep-level courses that we are going to offer as full-year courses for students to take to earn their English III credits. So what we'll have is we will have a general English III that's still available for students who do need that. We'll have these six courses for CP, your college prep, English III, and we'll still also have our AP Language and Composition, which is available for juniors as well. This is all junior year of English. When we're looking at options and what to offer that might intrigue students, kind of where we came with talking to other English teachers to provide their info on what they think students would be interested in taking. If you look in the program studies, some of those are very detailed as far as some examples of what could be read as far as novels are concerned. So that's just something that we're trying, we're trying this year to see what is that. Instead of having your typical English III course and reading, you know, some of those English III, you know, books that we've always read, getting a little bit more pinpointed to what the student's interest might be. Want to add anything?
No, we're really excited about this. We're not sure what's going to run. So when I, when I brought up the novel earlier and I said typically we do this in the spring, our expectation is that we will have a long list of books that need to be read for spring reading, depending on which courses run. Don't know that all six are going to run. We're looking for that 21 magic number, but our hope is that we've found topics that students are interested in and that they'll be a little bit more excited about their junior English class and want to stay with us.
I have a couple of things with this, and I've already expressed some of this in the email. First off, the Transitional Leadership Class, I think this is awesome. I hope your students think this is awesome. It, what Dan had communicated back to us, it seems like some of the business committee that you've been having is talking about things that they're looking for in students is those soft skills, the leadership. And what I read in your Transitional Leadership Class, it just seems like this is nailing it. So I'm hoping that they see this and, and they're able to get some stuff from this. It talks about who am I and what is my why is the first class, and then the history and evolution of leadership. So I just think that's really exciting. To me, this kind of nails what the business polit, or the business committee has been, what's that?
Business advisory.
Business advisory committee, thank you, has been saying this is some of the things that we're missing when students are graduating from high school.
And we may be able to use some of those business members as guest speakers in this class to help.
That's awesome. That's real-life stuff of this is what you need to do to, you know, to some of the EQ stuff that's important, that's not just your IQ stuff. So that one was one of the things that jumped out at me as I was reviewing, that I just, I hope that the students feel like it's as exciting as I think it is and that, you know, I think the professionals are saying this is what you need. So I am, I am concerned with the horror literature. I, I just feel like with all of the options that are out there, and I understand that it can match up with state standards, but to take a half a semester and have all of the literature around horror and knowing that we have the concerns that we do with our kids' mental health, I'm not going to vote no on the program of studies for this, but I just cannot let the board reading pass without stating my concern with this. Of, I think that there's a lot of students that do not have parental involvement in signing up with their classes. And I just question, are, are we ensuring that students are really ready for this? I get it that they can read whatever they want on their own. Positive is that it will be led by a teacher, so there will be that involvement. But to have a half a year of that as the literature that's in their head that counts for that credit is just a concern for me. I just feel like, gosh, out of all the awesome literature that's out there, it just feels like, you know, when we've got Shakespeare and science fiction and transitional leadership and sports and literature, there's all these awesome things. And I'm sure you'll get your 21 that will sign up for that.
There is a lot of interest. You know, we currently have Dracula on our reading list for our students. They love it. Frankenstein is another one that's on our reading list currently for our students. They love that. We have a lot of students who are huge fans of Edgar Allan Poe. Those are all what I would call books for students within the classes now. They are guided by the teacher. They are classic literature pieces. Yes, that, those of which have already been approved, that they're already reading, that the students really do enjoy. They are teacher-led in an appropriate fashion, meeting those standards as you brought up earlier. I assure you that they're not going to be reading anything that is not approved by this board for reading in class. Many of the, we're not talking about reading the full series of Stephen King here. You know, we're talking about classic literature that is written from, from a horror genre.
But I think that, I go Lisa's point, I think that would just give the topic and likely sensitivity. I mean, I think it'd be good to maybe get a preview of even what you're contemplating is, you know, beyond, I mean, the three books you just mentioned, I'd just easily call classics as you could horror fiction. But I, I agree, I would kind of be curious to peruse.
And I think that, I think that's, those are good points. Ms. Cook, in a semester class, roughly how many books would a student read?
Typically, we're looking at one novel per quarter per course.
Okay, so you're looking at maybe two books, maybe at the most three?
Yeah, one per quarter.
Okay, and it's a, it's just semester classes, but it's full year?
It's, it's...
Oh, it is a full year?
It's not, the writing included in it?
Yeah, that's, yeah, that's... But what I'm hearing is... That was not, that's been fixed, in essence, it's a semester.
Oh, it is, I wondered when it said the credit there.
Correct, so it's a full year.
Oh, it's a year for?
But what I'm hearing is that in four books, they...
Kids are thinking those.
The four books they would read are already books that we have approved in the past. They're classics. None of this do signistic stuff and so forth. It's the Draculas, it's the Frankestones.
They're not going to be reading it in the horror novel class.
We got Edgar Allan.
There's Edgar there.
Yeah. The only thing I would add to this is that I think that, you mentioned Shakespeare, and I know they're, I mean, they're all great, but I think what we're trying to do is get kids to read. And that you, without, and those are all, those are good points. I understand what you're saying, but we want to read. And so with the supervision of a teacher and a collective group of books that are approved, I think, I think the more kids we get to read, the better we, we are.
I think we can keep this course under a microscope. I'm sure we're not, we're not going to have really, really dark going on that we're always, every day.
I mean, I honestly, it sounds like a case of ad marketing. I mean, I think if we almost change the, the name of the course and swap out horror with something else, I guess that the reading list you just described is classic literature, so I mean...
Classic core?
Let's not give you the marketing team.
I mean, truly, my point is, my, my head went the same way, Lisa's going, it's like, okay, it wouldn't possibly be that. As even more described, it's like, okay, I've read those books in high school myself, I have chosen them. I'm very interested, so it's, I don't know, maybe we could...
There's definitely...
Wordsmith that one a little bit.
I'll get with Mr. Porter. Mr. Porter actually was the, the author of this particular course description. He's excited to get moment to be able to teach it. Mr. Porter, if you know him, is as straight as a line. I mean, this guy is...
Also teaches our AP Language and Composition.
The sharp guy is as straight as day comes. So I'll, I'll get with him. I'll explain some of the concerns. I'll ask about a possible change to the title. Perhaps get some more information for you on that. If there's a possibility, it might not run. You know, we might be having a conversation over a course that has no interest anywhere.
Another question, this is kind of outside the horror thing, is usually, is it Comp 3 one of our ACT prep courses? Like, will there be any of that in the horror?
No, I don't know that's itself is a horror, but...
I know, right? That actually would be...
Yeah, they'll, they'll be covering writing, they'll be covering poetry, they'll still be covering short stories, they'll be covering the vocabulary that's necessary for the ACT and the prep that goes along with that.
Okay, because I have heard from, from some students that have left the high school and gone and taken CCP, that they realized that they were missing some of the ACT prep when they did that and they didn't score as well on their ACT. So I just, that's why I wanted to make sure that we were still having that component in there if they chose not to take the traditional Comp 3 class and in, they chose one of the, the electives that you're putting in place of that, that all of those classes will still include that ACT prep component?
Yeah, to address your concern on that, we are, we are doing a side-by-side study of students who did CCP as a junior for their English and students who were here as a junior to see. We obviously don't have enough data. We have one year's worth of data that we're looking at. This year, that will add a whole lot more data. We have a lot more kids doing CCP and English language arts, but we're doing a side-by-side of score comparison on those to see. Is that something that we are comfortable saying to our public? That our scores for students who stay here are this average, our scores for students who go out are this average? So that's something we're working on now because that's something that we want to be able to address with our public at the end of the month when we do our CCP meeting.
Have we, like, have we talked to the students? I'm just trying to dig into the, you know, I know you have to look at different demographics with Spring Grove versus other communities, but as to why they're choosing to go to CC, like to do CCP with certain courses, just if there's something we can also alter with the traditional Comp classes? You know, I'm not saying not to look at other options, but also with the traditional. Have we also surveyed them to dig deeper into that piece of it?
We do have a Google survey that's out amongst all of our CCP students right now who took English language arts outside the building. So this is... The survey app, we're working in conjunction with Mr. Ewing, who's one of our English language arts teachers here. Development of that survey that has gone to our students. So we're interested to get that data back and be able to address that along with our CCP meeting with the parents.
Great, good to hear.
A lot more data from our kids to be able to express as to what we think might be going on.
Yeah, great to hear. Okay, thank you.
We're going to see how this works. I mean, does it draw a time? If so, and like we've thought it does, then what do we need to look at for maybe equal score? So when I, when you start thinking two years down the road, that's kind of where our, where our thought process is at. And, and so we'll see how, if we can look at the, we've talked with Mr. Porter over there, and then we'll see how with our, what our women takes. And I can tell you that there's three or four of those six that I would, I'd be very, very interested in taking. Just big backside, especially with transitional leadership. Yes, and I think we'll be a straight up top.
Typically, our junior level is American literature and our senior level is British literature. So we're also talking about how do we bring in more American literature into these? And how are we going to bring in more British literature as we look to the phone? British is a little bit tougher than when we're getting into these, these types of selections.
And then there at the bottom, we brought in, those are two new electives. There's part of our English curriculum, but as far as a half-credit for elective credit, they have poetry and then the novel. So those are, those are two new courses as well. Looking on the next page here, this actually will speak back from some of the students as far as adding a video game, gaming program design, half-credit course. The introduction to networking, textiles and design, which will be under the dental sciences. And then one we are very, very excited about, we've been talking about about a year and a half and is the beginning of American Sign Language, one, two, which will be under our international language course offerings. And we had, we've had an American Sign Language club years past. So we are anticipating, especially with the partnership with Sinclair, this is going to be a, a course that allows students to be interested in taking.
So is a Sinclair professor coming in and teaching that, or is...
Yes.
That'll be the first time we've done that.
Is one or two, is that a semester, a semester, is that, is that...
How does that partnership work? Sound like they're not, just payment-wise, salary-wise? How does that, how does an agreement work?
Our universities that are, that were paying the ceiling price up, when they send in a professor, like Wright State's a ceiling price, Miami's a ceiling price, they have different scales for when they send somebody to us when it's somebody who's at the floor. So we have floor pricing and ceiling pricing for the state for college prep plus. Sinclair is at the floor, so they will be charging us the floor pricing. So it's kind of, it's a win-win in that our students don't have to leave the building to go take ASL at the date in our, for Mason campus or other day to stay here or sending us an instructor and we're guaranteeing them so many students per session. So that's how, that's how they're getting the money.
Yeah, okay, okay, thanks.
And then I just want to make a comment on the introduction to networking. This information here, that you have described, choir. Introduction to Networking is a one-credit hour class that we had to add to meet the requirements of the UC partnership. So this is Connor, who is currently teaching our programming courses, our IT courses. She is doing some brush-up on networking. Me and she will be teaching that next year in order to fulfill the requirements of the University of Cincinnati for your clients.
And the last course on there is our second year of the Human Body System of our new Project League Way Bio-Bacterial Science course. So this year, we had Principles of Bio-Bacterial Science. Next year's our second year for the Human Body System, which is the course that's held down at the end of B hallway downstairs. So that's our last course there. Looking at total courses, when you look at, if you added and paid the Capstone programs, so anticipating the research class going in 2019, 20, with this program studies going into next year, we will have 29 advanced placement AP course offerings. We'll have 19 honors course offerings as well as a variety of new electives. So this is always a huge project, one that's enjoyable, but yeah, it takes up a lot of time. Just, you know, brainstorming and continuing to find courses that are going to be of interest to our students here. So we're hoping that with the new courses we have from hallway maybe down to our electives, that we're able to capture that.
Questions?
Very nice.
One of the, the questions that I had when I emailed you, I think that there's still confusion with people in looking at the program of studies with the program type. I know you said...
I agree with you on that. And I talked to Mr. Martin about that this afternoon and what, what I talked to him about was when we have courses, for instance, like a Physics C, AP Physics C, I could very well use that as my third credit of science for graduation, which would not make that an elective, but you maybe chose to go the route of physical science, biology, physics A, or Physics I and Physics C. So that's not an elective, that's an elective for you, but it's not an elective for me. So when we get into the program type as to whether it's elective, AP, CP, or general studies, are there a brief view that is confusing? And my recommendation is that next year, program studies will go away.
I was going to say that maybe we just need to have it go away. It's kind of like we're comparing apples with oranges there and...
There's so many courses that can be either required for me because I need that credit in that particular area, but it might be an elective for me.
I think it's, it's a old mortgage that we used years ago.
I think so.
In the course, many choices and offerings, which then kind of steered that towards being one or the other. But now that there are still more avenues, it's kind of created that to be a little bit more confusing than what it was years ago. So that's what we talked today, just completely removed it.
Talking about, are people even using that?
And then when they do use it, it leads to confusion.
Right.
At least of that first chart, is it going out?
That's exactly it.
So I think that will completely go away on.
Okay, okay, I, yeah, thank you. Okay. And that's where the, where I had written on page 20, to add the word program before type. I think that was one that we hadn't gotten any comment to. If we're gonna keep it, just for consistency, it just said type.
Okay, we got those in.
Oh, do we, we got that one? Okay. And then I actually had a typo. I wrote type on page 11.
I was hoping we'd hear that.
You got that. I'm like, okay, it was supposed to be saying there's a typo and I had the word, I had a typo on typo. That was, oh, my other question was, yeah, on science, yeah. My other thing was just, okay, so to understand the Teaching Profession Academy, basically that is what they've been doing at the ESC, but you're doing it here?
Correct.
Yeah, that was.
Is that?
Our students used to have to leave our building to go over to the Career Center to do that. They no longer have to be here. They can take the course here. And we have seen greater enrollment with our students. Who feel like it might take a year or two to get that out. We talked a lot with Mrs. Kemp. She's really excited to be here. She loves being part of the Spring Row community and staff and working with our students. She's seen our kids are top-notch. She would love to fill her entire day, her entire program with Spring Row students. So as soon as we can get that course kind of off its feet, we hope to be able to have a full-time program here with her. She currently leaves midday.
Gotcha.
Other duties for the Career Center, but.
It is the same thing, though, as our students went. It's just we're bringing it in-house.
Right, and.
Okay, that's what I thought, but I wasn't sure.
If I can add, teacher academies and career centers started doing them. They try to do them at career centers. Many of those students have wanted to be teachers, you know, or the type of student to be in that program, just in one league from old schools and go to Career Center. Kind of the reason why we have Project League Way here. So Career Center started embedding that in the old school. We started through a Buckland Tech 1 in Green County. And so when we talked about that, we knew we could get numbers around here and sure enough, we are.
We went from having, we went from four to six a year to what we have this year, about 18, 17.
Because when you think about between four and 4500 students per grade level in this school, you gotta believe 20 to 25, wanna get a teacher someday or an education or social work where this would help them. And so they want to stay here, thus they're all for the service here. It's been really good.
Yeah, it has. We've also been able to sell it because of the campus, because we've got Dennis Allen entry right now.
That doesn't say.
Junior high walk away.
You know, look about Google internship, he'll be down working with elementary teachers. He'll drop dead, yeah.
We expect it to grow. Same with biomedical, we had 57 this year. We'll lose some of those to senior graduation, but our hope is, my hope, I don't know if it ever will, it's my hope is to double those numbers next year. Takes a couple of years to grow.
That's awesome. Great job.
Thank you. Thank you. I shot here.
Committee reports.
We have one committee report this one. It's actually the Business Advisory Committee that we held on December 13. This one started off with a great presentation from four of our National American finalists. Thanks to Mr. Martin for setting those up. Students did a great job in presenting not only the American program, but why they were special with the district. Then that night, we looked at five questions. Business Advisory Council, as stipulated by the Department of Education, actually helps about five areas that business advisory should look at. And we have to do a report at least by March 2018 to the State Department of what we're doing in the Business Advisory Council. So we use those five questions for our. As already spoke about this meeting, the soft skills, the leadership side really, really was a great talk. We had many members of our Business Advisory Council attend. Everyone spoke that night. And everyone had a lot of the same vocal points. It was a good meeting. We have two more remaining in this school year because now we need to have four of those. We're adding a couple of new business leaders to our committee and only be adding four students. Two seniors and two seniors to the Business Advisory Council. So that the seniors that are actually being picked are seniors that are going to be right now projected to be at a college, like UC, University of Haiti, somewhere around, so they can come back as first and second-year college students and still be a part of our Business Advisory Council. Very exciting. I think those are the, any questions? Mr. President, we are ready to take a break.
There's been a request.
Yeah, thank you.
I have seven. The first one was. The second one, our.
Actually, there are.
There's a few highlights I'd like to point out. We received in 1,391,000. We'll have to pay for revenue in December. The key word to that is that we have 12.6 plus million expenditures. So that we're definitely getting into our cash balance and I think it's a play before that. And we're starting to see the impacts of it in our cash balance. And this is the first real market. You can see that we don't have much revenue, but we definitely have the trends that we normally do. Our expenditures for December, a little over 12.6 million dollars. That's slightly higher, sophisticated, that would be slightly higher because we did have supplemental, so that will pay out in December. Also, our benefits for December were 886,000. That's just the retirement portion and the SRS. The increase in gold, star and jewelry for our insurance increases for the year, that's about 5% of that overall effect. Also, if you receive a slightly larger amount for a second package. That went in on our pay. Our purchase service gave us 627,000. There's some change. A lot of that we can see what we do on ESC, buy one ability with a little over 274,000. We've had $80,000 in sub-cost for the month. That was from October 26th, maybe somewhere 11. Some other special related items, 60,000, utilities, 32. So a good enrollment in English School's trade program, 68,000. We're still only having small portion for CCP because until they, until they get our next. We'll have, let's see, we've already got, as we know here, I said, we have a first semester. So we'll have summer and this fall will be added later. So towards the end of the year, we'll have a large amount of deductions from Alaska. So that happened last year, if you remember. They had a catch-up and once those programs are done, they started dumping us from our foundation. They have to set yourself so that we still have a ballot happening.
How is the open form in community schools that actually is threatening?
Fairly consistent. This year, slightly lower than last year. But then if you remember, last year it was lower and then we had a giant.
I've explained, yeah.
So it's just changes. People drop out. Sometimes you'll notice a change over Christmas. You'll notice you'll come back for Christmas break and then we'll have kind of an influx of kids who don't come back. And then those new schools are very open at the moment. And then those first, that's somewhere around the bucks that come back, that are out that come back. So it's just.
But we've not stayed at that spike, that level that we saw at the end.
It's down. It is down this year. I think it's at around 500,000. I think last year was like 604 at the end of the year. So we're down about 200,000 right now. But I think again, it's just, I'll have to keep it formed and then once maybe this year, you know, I'll have a new. We'll kind of see what we're actually, they both fluctuate. So far, low and consistent and it's kind of like we lost here. So hopefully that will stay. Supplies, we had a little increase in our supplies to the mountain anticipating for the month of December. A lot of that's just based off of timing, purchases were made and imports are made. We did have 85,000 in building operational supplies, bus supplies, fuel, as well as 60,000 we have on looking at. 37,000 was for passing supplies.
Take your mic off.
Nothing at all.
I'm almost. So right now, as far as cash flows, if you look at. There's the bright yellow according to last packet. It shows right now, based on cash flows versus our October forecast, we're running about $90,000 under budget. So we can see how close to like more meeting and 90,000 on almost 52,000. So we're running right on. So hopefully there's nothing, nothing that's gonna happen except fluctuate that. And that is with cash flow anticipation. So I do have larger anticipations for CCP catch-up later on. I mean, I already have all of that kind of stuff built in into our cash flows. So we're running very close to budget, actually a little under, so that's good. Balances for December, all funds, we had a little over 15 million in our general fund cash balance of 7.7 million. Probably gonna be closer to about four at the end of January. So they'll only be pushing in around two or so after payroll first of February. So we'll be very, very, very tight. Hopefully cash advances. I haven't approved that resolution earlier, so I'll pick that tomorrow. And I will hopefully be one of the first people on the list to get the first taxes because once they start collecting. So those are the financials for December. I also have a slew of other cases. Approval of a donation of pitching machines from Mike De Nico to the Spring Row baseball program, i.e. $800. Also approval of the donation of $200 to the swimming diving program from an anonymous donor. Approval of $100 used to impart to the Chad Jett's choir from care data. Approval to $1,000 as a bonus initiative budget for Spence Ass, and that we wanted to discuss earlier, spread through the test for last week. Also an approval of a donation of $25 to the Clear Creek Library, the Margaret Letty Cup on behalf of the library.
Is there a motion to accept 8.87?
Can move.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? I have one about 8.7. I was asked to participate in the dedication of the library. Appreciate that, Mr. Schrader. I've known the Huff family over 40 years and that was very fitting for her to have the library named after her. And I think there might have a couple benches out front, right?
Actually, Mrs. Porter, Courtney, that, explain a little bit more about what we mentioned there are and someone might get that.
Yeah, so in lieu of her. So we purchased four metal, what we wanted to do was recognize her outside of the library because we know that's where she was, but many people don't, when they're in the building, they don't, they don't go to the library. So we wanted to, we purchased some metal benches and had some placers that will go out in front. So when you walk in the building, you'll see the memorial to her, this is her. And then outside the library will go the plaque for the dedication.
What's her connection to Clear Creek? Like, what made her want to do that?
She was the library.
She was the library at Clear Creek?
Generally, she was there.
She was the first one.
Regardless of how many grades, what grades were there, she was a mom.
That's really cool. Wow, what a neat way to remember her. Nice job.
Roll call, please.
Connor Anderson?
Yes.
Beth?
Yes.
Salaji?
Yes. Yes.
Yes. Director of Curriculum.
Mr. President, members of the board, I seek your approval for this novel, Piper's Hand, The Night Gave. This is the World War II novel about tourism in France.
Not a horse.
It is not a horse story.
I too. I've got a couple of questions, just based off of the review from Compass Book Ratings. And I guess that my question is just, at what, what is our, our point of, like, age level? The recommendation for this is 21-plus. Looks like there's war, religious discrimination, persecution, abandonment, sacrifice, death of family members, miscarriage, rape, homosexuality, murder, suicide, scene of rape without explicit details, nudity with sexual innuendo. I'm just wondering, how do we, what is our line? And to me, if it says age 21, why are we looking at it for our sophomores?
It's tough when it comes to a war novel. When you're talking, and I'm very passionate about this a lot, excuse me, but when you're talking about a war novel and what's going on during war times, it's not gonna be pretty. Our students study these wars. They study World War II during their American history, which is taken the same year as this English Language Arts class that the teachers are proposing this novel. They're doing that as part of an American study with the Social Studies Department. War is not pretty. So, you know, when it, when it, when you're looking at a review for 21, I don't know if that is because of the theme, if that's because of the lexile level, where they're coming from on that. I will tell you that my readers on this novel, I had two retired teachers. One was an elementary teacher, one was a high school teacher. I have two current moms of daughters. We're talking about a book about females. I want, I want women, I can say, but I want women to read it because who have daughters in their house, because I wanna know what they find appropriate for their daughters. I do have one reader who is a father of a teenager. So I did get readers who have a nice background. As I said, those two retirees are former teachers, one in elementary, one in high school. Of my five readers, I did not have any with any concerns as far as this novel goes for students who are being 16 years of age. That's why I use readers from outside. And I do typically try to get former educators as part of my pool. So I do feel like we have a thorough going over, but with it being more times, it's just not a clean topic.
Ms. Cook, if students take college credit plus classes at the college level and they go to Miami or go to Sinclair, do they read books at the same level, lower, higher?
Both. We don't have any control over what they read. Some are higher in style, some are lower. There's, we have no control over that.
With CCP, you're choosing to take a college level, though. That's different than at a sophomore level.
This was recommended at a English Language Arts seminar for high school teachers this summer. So this did come as a recommendation for high schools.
Is there a place that we could go, just as we're reviewing also what we approved that? Edge, I mean, because this is one review, you know, and that's where typically is I'm doing reviews. I mean, because I know we've talked before about books, Kyle's gotten emails from me before too, about books that my boys in high school have read. You know, so I just Google it. I don't know where to go just because I'm just Googling it for insights that I've used in the past. Is there a site that educators, that are good for high school educators to go to that is, shows the content, but it also shows that what they feel is age-appropriate? Because what they feel is content-appropriate might be different than what I feel, but, but age-wise, you know what I'm saying? That what they feel like age-wise.
Yeah, typically use our professional associations for that.
So as a board member or a parent, what can we go to? If we're not part of your professional.
Work with, within our professional organizations to do that. So what we bring you, like, what we bring you for approval, we've done the research on, we've worked with the professional organizations. We send our teachers to seminars to learn about what is a hot topic right now for students to read, what's gonna be of interest to them.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Through here?
No, we're going to 91, 92.
92, approval for your.
Well, see, for all program studies, we're here on.
So is there a motion to accept 91, 92? Second?
Second.
Roll call?
Anderson?
Yes.
Beth?
Yes.
Salaji?
Yes.
Director of Special Ed?
Good evening, Board President, members of the board. Tonight, I'm seeking approval, as we know, related services are constantly changing with this special ed. So I'm taking approval for the revision of services from Warren County Educational Service Center. Part of that is due to increased fees from Warren County Educational Service Center. The other part of that is the unexpected, expected need for one additional day for an occupational therapist at Clear Creek. So in a nutshell.
So a motion to accept 91? So a motion to accept nine, one? Second?
Second.
Any discussion?
I do. So when this was put on the agenda and I asked Tara what was different, um, you know, so what brought it back to the agenda, um, it made me relook at our contract with them. And I just wondered if, like, for occupational therapy, and this really isn't to your position, this is our contract as a whole. As a district, we're using the occupational therapists sixteen, or, I mean, we, I'm guessing three occupational therapists plus a little bit, sixteen days per week. So our contract with them is three hundred and seven thousand, eight hundred dollars. And then for physical therapy, it's eleven days per week at sixty-six dollars per hour, so it's two hundred and fourteen thousand, eight hundred and ninety-six. If I just estimate that out, totally without doing math, just kind of big picture, it appears we're, and tell me if I'm wrong here, that they would be getting paid around a hundred thousand per position. And I just wonder at what point would we consider bringing them in-house? Because it feels like even with benefits, we should be, I mean, the need is there clearly, we're needing more with Clear Creek and I support this. I get it, that if the children, if the students need it, we need to have them here, but as we continue to vote to bring more and more days in, it feels like, I think initially, the reason that we do the ESC is so that we can, um, contract out and not have that commitment in district. But if we're using this, if you were using these therapists this many days, I just wonder if we need to step back and look for the future and say, should we be looking at contracting this for next year as a full-time position, or multiple full-time positions? It seems like we have the need and that would warrant that and it would save our district, I think, a few hundred thousand dollars potentially with what they would be getting paid here.
I think without looking at the cost comparison, we wouldn't know that, but I too have questioned that since my position here of, is it more advantageous for us to do that, to bring it in-house or to continue going with them? And that's something I guess that Tara and I can look further into.
Yeah, I mean, when I got here, we used always the ESC for a lot of things too, and I had asked a question when I got here, there was special ed, um, you know, why don't we bring these people? And I got that, that are fine, those people for those types of positions, um, that they're not easily found, you need OT and PT. Besides, I also have, you know, because there are so few of them, they can kinda get whatever they want, in terms of salary. Um, also with the number of kids we have and that there'll be so many different kids that are being seen by these people, they have to have, um, you know, kind of higher, you know, K-12 or whatever it is, they might see seven kids, uh, you know, two hours of year at Dennis, and then they gotta go to high school, then they gotta go to junior high, and they're running all over and it's, they have to be certified, and I guess that's hard to find too. I mean, I, I read it somewhere a lot, but I always ask the questions on that too. So I think it's always good that taking six months, definitely look at it, because we're adding these, you know, like we added a day, you know, we have to add another person, we have to, we have two, two full-time people, we have to add another person for one day, it's always kinda common work for one day a week. So then that's where you're, when it's hard to get some better.
Well, that's right, I thought, I mean, even if we end up hiring two OT and two PT and then we hire some through the ESC for our, for those that we need to catch, I just wonder if there's a more efficient way, financially efficient way that we could do this? And this, this is what I get for attending board meetings for ten years. I remember in the past, and Tara, I think you were here during this time, a prior board member had questioned, uh, condition of the agreement, and that was, and we're not removing any of these services, but that was in the event, and this is in the back, the second page of this, "In the event that it is necessary for the Warren County ESC to employ additional personnel to provide the services selected by the specific school district, and those services are discontinued or the full service contract is discontinued, the contracting school district will be responsible for all unemployment compensation incurred by our office for that person." That's concerning to me to have it in there, and I remember when that person questioned, when that prior board member questioned that, I, it doesn't feel like that should be something that, that we're committing to, cause I thought that the reason we're doing the ESC is so that we're not making that commitment, the, the school district is not making the commitment, we're having part-time employment.
I don't remember that, I don't remember it per se, um, from here, but I do know we have to let them know in advance of the year for their planning process and they can properly staff all the districts that they service. We have to let them know the basis of what we're gonna need. So if other districts come through along the way and say, hey, do you have anybody? We, we lost somebody or what's happened, do you have anybody? And enough districts say that, they'll kind of employ a couple extra so that they can, you know, meet the needs of the districts on a whim if that's necessary. But I do know that we have to let them know by a certain time, um, and I'm not sure when that is, I would have to look. We would have to let them know at a certain time if we're no longer gonna need somebody. And if they couldn't find the, to take them, you know what I mean, if they didn't have any other, you know, appointment for them, um, then we probably have to circle back and talk, cause this never happened. Right now, there's districts who are on the shelf because we have so many needs, they can't help us. We have a, we've been asking them for a few things and they can't, they don't have the people. So they've never not, they've never had people on the shelves, so it's because they don't have anyone to set them. The district needs are higher than they need them for. So we're even having to look at other outside, um, places. I know John, who we were talking about earlier, we're trying to find, was it, I'm not sure, speech maybe? We've got one, we're, we're, we can't find anybody.
Psychologist.
Psychologist.
And so we're, we're having to go to other, um, agencies to see if they have any, cause nobody has. I just don't, I don't see that we would ever, this is a, this is a standard thing in every school district, this is what all districts' contracts look like. Um, and I don't, I don't, I couldn't foresee a time where they would ever try to charge us an appointment or any other costs, because they have too many needs for districts and not enough people to service those. I really, I really can't see that ever happening.
I think those, that brings to the point, you know, something that, Emily and I have talked about a lot is to look at all of the different contracts we have, whether we're students servicing, sending services, or sending students to different locations, or whatever contracts we have, whether it's Warren County, whether it's Hamilton, whether it's Butler. And I know she's been getting that, this year has been a very, very busy year for her and her team, and so she has been doing some of that, but it will continue, so I appreciate it.
And we have been looking at other areas too, even of sharing costs. I've talked to Franklin, um, Miami, we've talked to other districts who'll possibly share the cost, transportation costs, services, all kinds of things. So it's definitely something that, when things get a little calmed down, you know, for her, um, you can sit down and go to screenize all of her comments. We've already screened out the scene, but we can do some of that.
Great. Okay, thanks. Just, it drew, it drew my attention once that, once the contract popped that up. So it had nothing to do with your position, I know that you fully need those, and I support those. Yeah. Okay, thanks.
Roll call, please.
Anderson?
Yes.
Back.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yeah. Executive Director, John?
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, for your consideration tonight, um, eleven point one is the, uh, the personnel report, um, our first one of two. Um, I do have a change on there because I have too many jobs and I didn't catch this. Megan Pearson is the clinic nurse at Dennis, so she's not at Clear Creek as an aide, she's a clinic nurse at Clear Creek. Sorry, I missed that, I, they helped me catch a couple things earlier and I missed that one. Um, but we are hiring, um, two of tho, or three of those folks that are at, at Clear Creek are for the new, um, preschool classroom that we're opening up. Um, we're, we're slowly getting furniture in and everything else and, and they're getting the room set up as we speak and hopefully by, uh, the third week or so of, um, January, we'll be ready to have, uh, several students in there ready to learn and, and everything else, cause they're all waiting to come, we're just trying to get it all set up. Um, we have a home instructor, um, we have a sub for the nursing, and then we have just some leaves of absences, absences for various issues. And then eleven point two is approval of a request for an out-of-state trip for the, uh, the winter guard. They're going to Indianapolis for a, uh, meet, uh, president's weekend in February, so they won't be missing any school, but they'll, uh, it is an out-of-state trip, so it needs your, your approval.
Okay, is there a motion to accept eleven, one and two?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
If there are reasons, that's one, two, one, two, one, seven, eight, nine, ten.
Jamie?
I just said.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Anderson?
Yes.
Back.
Yes.
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 And eleven point three is approval of one camp worker that had been left off a while ago.
So, motion to...
Second.
Second. Roll call?
Anderson?
Yes.
Back.
Yes.
Yes.
Out of state.
Thank you.
Thank you. Comments, uh?
Just a little, yeah. Um, welcome to twenty eighteen, fellow board members and institutions staff. Um, you know, I, it was, I've been talking about this, uh, a couple weeks ago, I think, really had a fantastic group staff of the year, um, which, again, there's the, um, folks in this room that, that's, uh, really blessed with the fact that no major issues and, you know, things have run very smoothly, so that's great. Certainly appreciate having you again, it's nice to see the students come in, um, you know, every board meeting, that certainly is fun to see again, thanks for, um, all the presentations today and, um, information, I thought it was a great discussion on everything, I'm looking forward to the follow-ups on that, I think it's a relevant topic, so I'd be good to dig in and see what, what we find out. And, um, glad you, uh, get rolling with it.
Well said, yeah, thank you again to the students, I enjoyed that, they were discussing about, I managed to not hear that song, uh, that's all, I appreciate that, uh, it was catchy, and I appreciate them, I'm being here, uh, again, congratulations officially to, uh, to Mr. Goods and Mr. Stuckey and Mr. Anderson for, uh, as I joked, the four-year sentence, um, so congratulations, as good old is, I guess. And thank you, uh, I enjoyed the presentation on the program studies, Mr. Martin, I think that's just, we've made this comment at several different occasions, but, uh, it just, it continues to amaze me, just the, the sort of new and exciting ways that we, um, continue to challenge our students and the opportunities that we give them, and again, it's just like they compared to my experience at growing up, and I just, I think it's, it's great to see just, um, how much, how much energy and effort goes into, to, just exposing them to a variety of different things, and really helping them, uh, prepare them for their future, so I just appreciate all of our...
Uh, the, the students up here, I think it was neat to see all the different schools up here and to know that they didn't have any chance to practice until tonight, you would never have known that, so, um, that was, that was awesome to see and, um, it was a neat way to thank the board members, so thank you for that. Um, thank you for the program of studies and all the work with that, I know that that is a ton of work and it was obvious that you're really relooking at what we're presenting at the high school and trying to get to what is of interest to the students and looking at, looking creatively at doing what's, what's, what's best for them. So I think, you know, once again, the transitional leadership class and those kind of things, I think we've gotta be looking at high school differently, and I think that's a perfect example of doing that. Um, and I just think it says a lot for our district with that AP capstone, um, however many you said, twenty-three in the state or something?
Twenty-eight currently.
Twenty-eight currently in the state, I mean, that really says they're looking for a certain something in a, in a school district. So that really shows that our district is one that, um, you know, we're setting ourselves apart from a lot of the districts, so, um, kudos for that, that's awesome, great job.
I don't really have any, any more to add, uh, the previous board members said, said it all. I guess I would say thank you to the gentleman that donated the baseball pitching machine, that's, you know, that's eighteen hundred dollars, that's a, that's a, I mean, we appreciate all the donations, but eighteen hundred dollar pitching machine for those kids is gonna be pretty awesome to have, but I don't know, everybody knows, but I could use it.
Yeah. Yeah, well, thank the, uh, young people for the, uh, song that they sang, and like many other groups that have come in here, it's always pointed out, how long I've been here, as a student, a parent or whatever, so, but they were great. And the last thing I have, uh, I'd like Tiffany Carlyle to talk about the, uh, Valentine's Day Mash for the, uh, booster club that's coming up in February, if you would mind.
Um, it is Saturday, February seventeenth, second annual, I guess, we're hoping it'll be bigger than last year, it'll continue to grow it. Um, it's eight p.m. to midnight at Heatherwood. Um, we will have dancing, um, food, lots and lots of food, appetizers, but sliders and full meal, I mean, there's lots of good, lots of food, um, desserts, there will be silent auctions, all of the teams, we'll do baskets that we will silent auction off with some really great teams, um, all to support athletics in Springbrough. Tickets are forty-five dollars for a single ticket or eighty-five for a couples ticket, and you can give them, it's a fan store, or you can order them online, we have a website, it's W W W dot Springbrough Athletic Boosters dot com. And we are looking for sponsors, if any businesses would like to sponsor us, if you work for a company that can sponsor us, we're looking for sponsorships, you can get mentioned at the basketball games and of course, sign in and things like that, we would appreciate your support.
Thank you. Sure. I believe we have some...
Yeah, I've got one thing, and then I think a couple principals have some highlights to share. We received two emails over the past month, one from Pat Runz, Ohio State, from a member, and one from Sarah. About the notice of public education we have in Ohio, and I think maybe across America, January twenty-first, twenty-seventh. This is a proclamation that's been really done by the mayor of the city council. We contacted the city and the mayor was excited, Julie Proclamation, which I had put in front of all of you tonight, so it's more of an informational item to say thank you to the mayor and to the city of Springbrough for their support, not only public education in the Springbrough schools. With that, any principals have anything to say in their buildings? All right, go ahead, Frank.
I am happy to announce, we, we have a federal judge who is supposed to come in on January fifth, from the Southern District of Ohio, to speak to five hundred eighth graders, and they were great, we called him on the fourth after Superintendent Schrader's, uh, message went out that, uh, that school's canceled, and they rescheduled it for January nineteenth. Um, so he'll be coming in, speaking, I mean, you're talking about someone that's appointed by the president in that position, so, uh, he's gonna be speaking to all five hundred kids for about an hour, and we have about sixty eighth graders who are gonna have a lunch with them and be able to ask kind of a question and answer to take lunch in. So really, any kind of student's interest in a law-based career, great career exposure opportunity for them, so.
Ninety-four, there's eight inches, so...
We'll reschedule again.
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Price. Ms. Porter?
Hi, I'm Heidi, just wanna share, moving into the new year, I'm excited, we're really soon to talk about, I've heard, physical registration already for next year. That's scary, but it's exciting times too, so more dates and more information on our next...
Well, I, I was gonna say the same thing. First off, it's a pleasure working with, you know, the military team we have here in the building, at Central Office of Department of Education, going into that new year. Um, but I think right now, just as we're diving into a very busy time for high school with program studies, registration, it's more sports selections than testing, so we are, we are tapping that right now, this week, this week, so the next two and a half months are gonna be very, very busy, so, uh, but, you know, thanks, Mrs. Cook, for her help work with the program studies and making that look nice and pretty and providing a lot of input as far as, you know, what we have offered, uh, cause that is, uh, that's a huge task, uh, that we work really closely with, with our teachers to, as you said, Mr. Vade, to put something together that our students want to take, uh, so...
So, and then Mrs. Hunter, Mrs. Stacy had something that they wanted me to share, this is how much they enjoyed working with Mr. Franks.
Did they?
Yes.
And I think they would appreciate it. They would appreciate how you said the word pretty.
I know I appreciated it. It made me chuckle. Today was our first day with our students in grades six through eight, who are participating in the Powered and Pumped Up competition, which was our second NASA grant that Mrs. Holtry is leading. That is a student grant. So the first one was on professional development for our teachers. The second one is a grant that we were excited to receive to be able to deliver a contest to our students. So today was the first day of several weeks of that, so we're looking forward to seeing the students powered and pumped up, and hopefully we will have a presentation on that for you in the upcoming weeks.
Thank you. Mr. President, we're ready to move to executive session.
With that, I need a motion to move to executive session to consider the employment, employment dismissal, discipline, promotion, demotion, for compensation of a public employee or official. Is there a motion to move? Second?
Second.
Rule call?
Yes.
Shad?
Yes.
Good. Yes.
Yes.